We are going to get started. James has the go ahead. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. Before I proceed with roll call, I'll read the conditions under which we will be holding this Zoom special meeting. The special meeting of the town council is pursuant to government code section 54953E related to teleconferencing of meetings. The governor's proclamation of a state emergency is still in effect and the town council has made or will make the necessary findings under the law to hold teleconference meetings in this manner. Proper notice was given for this meeting. All persons are permitted to join remotely and address the town council directly. The meeting will be delayed in the event of a town-caused disruption. This meeting will be held in all respects according to the requirements of government code section 54953E. The town manager is present in his office. I am here, present in council chambers, and council members Mueller, Dornbecker, and Knight, along with staff, are participating remotely by video, audio, in performance of government code section 54953E. And if there is a little bit of background noise, we could just be careful about that. Public comment, members of the public have been able to provide public comment either by town public comment email, publiccomment@yountville.com. As a Zoom webinar attendee using the Zoom raise hand feature, and I will call on that person at the appropriate time. Also, e-comment feature in Prime Gov, which can be found as a speech bubble with the HTML agenda. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like our viewers to know any vote taken during the teleconference portion of the meeting will be taken by a roll call by the town clerk. In addition, public hearing and administrative regular items that have representative.
Seems like we've lost audio.
Mayor, you seem to be muted now. Looks like he was disconnected.
Daniel, where are you going?
Hold on a minute. There he is.
Okay, I'm back. Lost connection there for a minute. That was a town responsible connection failure, but I am back. Don't know why, other than people wanted me to stop talking. I believe I got through the fact that we're going to get to roll call. I'd like to confirm all members of the town council are present in the video gallery. I'll ask town clerk Eddie Gomez to conduct roll and ask each member of the council to respond to the questions. Are they able to hear the proceedings and do you each have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Eddie?
Yes, mayor. Councilmember Knight?
Thank you. I have a copy of the agenda and I can hear the proceedings.
Councilmember Dornbicker?
Yes, to both.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes, to both.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. The record shall reflect all council members can hear and have today's agenda and are present. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic.
The Constitution stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just world.
Thank you. Next is adoption of today's special meeting agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
Adoption.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion, Councilmember, Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Eddie, go ahead.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbicker?
Yes.
And Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. Thank you. Public comment on anything not on our agenda, Eddie, did we receive any?
We have not received anything not related to the agenda, mayor.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to the consent calendar item 6A, adopt resolution number 22-4096, authorizing remote teleconferencing meetings of the town council and all town boards, commissions, committees pursuant to government code section 54953E. Do we have any public comment on this, Eddie?
We do not, mayor.
Is there a motion to this effect? Somebody not muted. I believe that was Councilmember Dornbecker motion, Councilmember Muller second. All in favor? I mean, roll call?
Roll call. Yes. Councilmember Dornbicker?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. Thank you. We have no presentations or public hearings. We'll move on to item 9A, which is our first administrative regular item, consideration of appointment of a town, of a council member to vice mayor position to complete the remainder of the existing vice mayor's term. And I believe we're going to start with a staff report. Steve, are you going to start and then Gary?
Very briefly, mayor council, as outlined in the very brief staff report, with the resignation of the vice mayor Kerry Dorman on January 6th, we now have a vacancy. And at this point in time, consistent with the town council protocols, it would be appropriate to fill the vacant vice mayor position from amongst the three remaining council members. With that.
We have four remaining council members.
No, you are not eligible to be vice mayor, mayor.
Yes, true. Okay, thank you. Gary, did you have any follow-up to that or no?
So the municipal code provisions and also the protocols require that it be filled as soon as practical following the vacancy. It's all like that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and invite Eddie to read the public comment that's been submitted late this afternoon by emails. I think we have three or four before I make my recommendation. Go ahead, Eddie.
Yes, mayor. The first one is from Billy Hewitt, and it says, Dear Town Council, please consider seriously Marita Dornbecker for her, for vice mayor. She has experience, presents a good image, and is is.
To Yountville residents.
Sorry, it was hard for me to read. Loyal. The, she has the right stuff. Sincerely, Carla Yates and Billy Hewitt. The next one is from Holly Hansen, and she submitted via the public comment on Prime Gov. And she says, we support a vote for Marita Dornbecker for vice mayor. We have been impressed by her genuine concern for the community and citizens. We believe she has provided unbiased and impartial leadership on the council. Holly Hansen and Jean Massey. And the last one was an email from Sherri and Joel Bredigan, and it says, Yountville mayor and town council, please consider appointing Marita Dornbecker to vice mayor position to complete the remainder of the existing vice mayor term.
Again, that was Sherri and Joel Bredigan. Thank you. So no additional public comments come in, Eddie?
I have not seen any others, mayor.
Okay, thank you. We've gone through this recently and I will share my thoughts about the vice mayor position and the selection of the vice mayor. I've been frustrated, and I mentioned it last time we did this, that it seems that this has become not only a little bit contentious, but more of a popularity contest than what I believe the vice mayor's role needs to be, which is the person that I feel is best suited and experienced and appropriate to take over if I am absent from either a meeting or any other obligation from, as the mayor. And so I am going to again recommend to this council that Margie Muller is the selection to finish the vice mayor term that will end, it'll expire at the end of November, at the election, the next election. The reasons I'm considering this, I stated the last time we went through this and Vice Mayor Dorman was reappointed. It doesn't have anything to do with previous vice mayors or or anything related to individuals as people. We all work well together and get along, and I think we are respectful. But I do feel very strongly that Councilmember Muller is the best suited to continue Vice Mayor Dorman's term. Councilmember Muller not only has been a longstanding member of this council that has been involved in many high-level and important committees, LAFCO being probably the most prominent out of all of them, but not the only one. And I feel in my absence, whether it's to run a meeting or in my absence representing the county of Yountville, I believe Councilmember Muller would be the most qualified and best suited to do that. And that has no negative connotation on Councilmember Dornbecker or Councilmember Knight. This is my feeling. This used to be something that was fairly automatic, the recommendation of the mayor for a vice mayor. Because I do look at this as someone that needs really broad capacity for not only the normal business at hand, but if there is, are there extenuating circumstances that come up? I think it's important somebody is able to handle that, and I believe Councilmember Muller can do that. I also mentioned the last time that Councilmember Muller, I believe, is the only council member that has not had a full term as vice mayor. And I believe that her tenure, she deserves that opportunity to at least fill out this term for the next year. So that's my recommendation. Again, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Muller to the unexpired term as vice mayor after the balance of 2022. And I'll entertain either a second to that motion or a further discussion.
Mayor, I'd be happy to second that motion. I would be very honored to step in if I needed to and very willing and able, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Knight?
Mayor, thank you. I actually did listen to the July 2016 meeting where it was the last time where this occurred. But with all due respect, I would like to present a substitute motion. And I would move the town council appoint Councilmember Dornbecker as vice mayor to complete the remaining term.
We would need a second on that substitute motion.
I'd just second it, but first I'd like to make a statement, please. Thank you, Councilmember Knight, for the nomination. This is my 12th year in office. The zoning and design review board for two years before being elected to council time. I was elected in 2020, 2010, and reelected in 2014, and I am opposed in 2018. I served as vice mayor for two years, but prior to that, I was nominated by Mayor Dunbar. But at that time, I withdrew my name and stepped aside because I felt it was in the best interest of the town residents. I was then selected by my colleagues as vice mayor in 2016. I've always held that the residents of our town are my first priority, and I still do. I have spent a good deal in disaster preparedness to residents in their neighborhoods and in the workshops that I have co-hosted before COVID stopped us from meeting. I reached out on the evening of the horror of the pathway home shooting when I saw it spontaneously at the community center plaza, and I spoke to them to commiserate with them and to calm them. And I invited them to speak as well. I've responded to our veterans by serving at every luncheon on Veterans Day, attending allied council meetings and having, welcoming the women veterans to my home on multiple occasions over the years. And I have attended Music in the Park, gallery openings, and volunteered at town functions throughout my time. That is why this time I cannot step aside. I believe our residents need respect and understanding. They need me to step up and step in because this is such a change and a difficult time. Many in the community have expressed this to me personally. So I ask for your support so I can turn, in turn, support the friends and neighbors through that what will be a challenging year with the election that will take place in November. I feel it is my I second my nomination. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion about the substitute motion? Seeing no hands, Councilmember Knight?
Mayor, I just want to say I'm supporting Councilmember Dornbecker because in my, in my opinion, this is, she's the one best to complete this term as vice mayor. I'm not going to compare each council member's experience. Both Councilmember Muller and Dornbecker have represented our community with great skill and both share the same passion and love for our community. I have benefited from both members' analysis and comments in this past year. But at this time, I'm moving for Councilmember Dornbecker's appointment. Thank you.
And I'll just comment, you know, I have been mayor for 12 years, and I think I am best suited to know whom it is most capable at a given time to support me as a vice mayor. I've actually nominated both council members, Muller and Dornbecker, and I also nominated former vice mayor Dorman as well. So I believe my record of recommendations is not only fair and balanced, but it is based on the capabilities that I see as needed to fill in my role. That's why I've continued to lately, I felt like Councilmember Muller is the most suited for that. We do have a substitute motion and a second on the floor. If there's not any further discussion on the substitute motion, I will go ahead and ask Eddie for a roll call vote on it.
Yes, mayor. Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbicker?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
No.
Mayor Dunbar?
No. So we're going to then deal with the initial motion that I made and was seconded by Councilmember Muller to have Councilmember Muller appointed vice mayor. So if you could, is there any further discussion on that motion? Not, Eddie, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
No.
Councilmember Dornbicker?
No.
Okay, so we're at a deadlock. We're going to continue the selection of vice mayor to a meeting when we have full council, five members, so that there will be an uneven number to vote since we are clearly deadlocked at 2-2, unless somebody is willing to change their vote. Councilmember Knight?
It's a point of question, mayor. Are we, is this a mo, would this be a motion to table this decision?
Yeah, there is no.
Would it need to be a motion to table? Are this, this, or a second and a motion that passed the pass to move this to another meeting?
I do not believe so. Gary, do you want to confirm that?
Yeah, there wouldn't need to be a separate motion because there hasn't been action on the item here. You can move to move, to extend this to a date certain, to a future meeting. If there's a particular meeting you want to hear this at. My understanding, though, is that this would probably be on the next meeting, following an appointment or an election, depending on the next agenda item and the council's outcome there.
Right, and so we can't have a date certain because we're not sure of our next action. That's why I said this is going to be continued to a time when we have a full council.
Mayor, I just have a question, just, I'm sorry, just a point of question on it. So we were moving, there was a motion placed, we vote, we voted on two motions. So maybe the town attorney can explain to me the difference of just continuing an item versus the fact that we voted twice. And would this, would, wouldn't this require a motion to table it or a motion to move it to a particular, another council meeting? So instead of us deciding on it today?
Well, a motion to table would prevent it from being brought up in the future. So I think it's a motion to continue, either to a future date certain or not, if the council wants to take action on that. But even without a motion to continue, a 2-2 has the effect of no vote, and so there hasn't been action on this item. So there won't be resolution unless, as the mayor mentioned, there's a substitute motion for perhaps a different council member or if a vote changes that would allow an appointment to occur at this meeting.
Yeah, I've invited anyone that's willing to change their vote. No one has responded in the affirmative. So we have two deadlocked votes, which means there's been no action taken. And so I am going to continue this. Do we need a formal motion, Gary, or can it just be continued due to no action?
I think it continues either way. So if the council would like a motion, you certainly can. Otherwise, there's just no action on this item and it'll be brought up at the next meeting.
Well, it may not be the next meeting, depending on our actions. We're going to though we have a full council, not a date certain, because we're not sure of the appointment versus special election timing. Okay? Is that clear to everybody? All right. We're going to move on to our next item, discussion of possible direction regarding process to fill the vacant council seat resulting from the resignation of Vice Mayor Kerry Dorman. And we will start with a staff report on that, please. Steve and then Gary?
Yep, thank you, mayor, council. We have provided a fair amount of background and detail, and the town attorney and I will try to walk you through the process and identify options for the council. Briefly, the council has two options. One is to hold a special election to fill the vacancy. And then the second option is to appoint a person. The town council has 60 days from the effective date of the resignation to either appoint a council member or call for the special election to fill her unexpired term, which runs through December 2022. The 60-day deadline would be Monday, March 7th, 2022. If the town council calls for a special election, it must be held at the next regularly established election date, which in this case would be the June 7th, 2022 primary. And we would have to make, the town council would have to make the decision prior to February 13th for us to take action to put the resolution onto the county to conduct the election. If it chooses this option, the election would be held on, like I say, the June 7th. The cost has been estimated to be in the range of $45,000 to potentially as much as $75,000 if the election was held independently. And as you may recall, right now, Napa County is an all-male election. And currently during the pandemic, under the governor's executive orders, all elections are male and ballot option. For an appointment process, the town council would need to establish timelines for seeking resumes, qualifications, publish a notice of vacancy, and then interview potential interested applicants at a council meeting and make an appointment. We've outlined an approximate guideline for the council to consider with regard to the timeline. Certainly, some of those dates could be extended if that was the preference of the council. But you'll, you'll see where at January 11th, where you're making a determination. If you move to an appointment process, we would place advertising in both the January 13th and 20th Yountville sun, our social media posting, our website, and various social media applications that we use. A recommendation is for a final closing period of 4:00 PM on Friday, January 28th. We would verify on the 31st that all candidates that expressed an interest met the qualifications. And there would be an interview time and appointment process as part of the regular February 1st, 2022 council election. We've also indicated that if the council wanted, staff would hold a orientation to try to provide an overview and some basic information to potential candidates that might be interested. Key thing is, either way, the council must either call for a special election or fill the vacancy by appointment prior to or honor before March 7th, 2022. The council will operate with four council members until it either makes or the results of the special. Gary can go over some of the election timeline details, but basically those are the two options that the council has for filling the vacancy. And at this point, there's approximately 11 months unexpired term.
Thank you, Gary.
I just wanted to add some additional details on the election timing and the calling of that. The elections code and the government code requires that the special election be called at least 114 days before the election occurs. State law also requires that the special election be on a quote regularly established election date, which are set by the elections code. Those are the ones that occur in June and in November, and they're the primary and the general elections that are set by state law. So in order to, on 7th election time, called the special election after that, the seat would essentially be vacant until the November election because that's the next regularly established election date. Now, there might be some movement there because of the all-male ballot and COVID emergency orders that relate to elections. And there are some provisions in the election code that, that allow for all-male ballots on other dates. My sense is it's going to stay vacant until November if the election is called after February 13th. But if the council chooses the election option, we would need to come back with a resolution to call that election anyway. And we could confirm those dates and see if there's any other options there.
Thank you. And just to repeat, this was from Steve's report, because the staff report listed the cost of a special election at $45,000, that you had an updated number. Steve, can you just repeat that, please?
Yes, John Tudor estimated the, if it was a election utilizing a manual count, the 45,000 to 50,000 estimate would probably be correct. If it used the election tallying equipment, it could be as high as 75,000.
Thank you. And in terms of the history of council actions in this case, because we've had a significant, I'll say, number of vacancies that have been filled, I don't think there, since I joined in 2004 by appointment, by the way. I don't, we have not had a special election for a vacancy. I don't know that we've had one prior to that. Every time we've had an unexpired term that I can remember, and I don't know 50-plus years of history, but certainly in the last 18, I don't remember there being any special election. There's always been an appointment for varying lengths of time. For, for me, it was a year and a half, almost two years, when I joined in 2004 and then was first elected in 2006. So the length of time has changed. In some cases, it's been seven months, in some cases, it's been a year and a half. But we have, basically, in the last 20 years at least, gone with, with appointments. Any questions of the staff report? Any public, Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, mayor. I was questioning maybe for town attorney Bill. So I see that there's basically three options. There's two special election options and an appointment option. I don't think the June primary one is a logical option, but my question was if we I guess the process, if we chose to do an appointment, but we're not able to appoint someone by, let's say, March 1st, then we would potentially be, we would be calling a special election, let's say, on our March 1st meeting for November. And so my question is, when we call a special election, how is, is that election run differently by the Napa County Elections Department than the regular election? Would people be, I guess what I'm thinking, would people be at some point? Would people be, I guess what I'm thinking, would people be at some point applying earlier for for election of that seat, and, and it be different? And then those that applied for the other seat open would be applying for that seat, or would it be open, would people be running for both seats on, in that November election?
Let me just correct a couple of things you've said. First of all, the November election would not be a special election. It would be the regular election. We would, we would just not have a council member for eleven months, ten months. There, it wouldn't, there would not be, you can't run for two seats at the same time. And there would be vacancies in November. One of them would be the one that has been vacated by Vice Mayor Dorman, and then two other seats are up, the mayor and, and Councilmember Doran Becker. So those three would still be up in November as part of the general election. Gary, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, Mayor, I understand that. I guess, you know, reading Election Code, it's like you almost need a, a, a course in reading subdivisions and subsections of, of government code. And I was just, what concerned me was the term, in March first, we would be calling for a special election. And I, my question for the town attorney was, is that considered something different than the process we do later in the year to call for a regular election of two council member seats and the mayor's seat?
So the answer to the immediate question is no, it's not any different. A special election has the same filing deadlines. It's consolidated with any, with another election, and it's run in the same way as the other election is run. You would call it in the same way by adopting a resolution, ask the county to run that election. There would be election costs associated with it. But whatever election it's consolidated with, it's run with the same deadlines in the Elections Code. So the process doesn't change. It's called a special election because it wouldn't otherwise occur absent the vacancy. But that's the only reason why that term, that's why it's called special election. And what was the follow-up question? Did you have any other questions?
Well, I think there, there's, there seems to be some confusion about when a special election would be held. You're saying it would not be associated, almost impossible to associate it with the June primary. So we would it be based on when the election is actually called?
Yeah, so in this case, it's a little strange, because you have vacancies, obviously, in a council member's four-year term. You can have vacancies occur at any time in that. If it occurs in the first half, there's certain rules that apply. Second half, other rules apply. In this case, because it's so close to the end of the four-year term, state law requires that you make this decision to call a special election or make an appointment, gives you certain deadlines for elections, but the practical effect is that it would wait until there would, an election would otherwise occur. So if you were to choose that, and it were to happen on March one, as Councilmember Knight suggests, you'd call the special election, I think, because that's what state law asks you to do before the sixty days are up. But the practical effect is that it would remain vacant, and then the election would occur in November as it was already scheduled to do. And then the person elected at that seat would be seated and serve a four-year term.
Any other questions about special election? Any questions about the appointment process, as Steve outlined? Basically, shortly after taking such action, we would post the vacancy and after, I think, Steve, if you want to refresh again, a period of a couple of weeks, then we would schedule interviews, and there don't know if we could have interviews the same day as a regular meeting and seat that person, or if it would have to happen after they were caught up on some of the pertinent issues.
Yes, the, the recommended potential calendar for you is a deadline of January twenty-eighth, four P M. on Friday. A review on Monday to determine that they are valid. And then an interview as a part of the section, a, a section, if you will, of the regular council meeting. I think Gary and I can look at, you know, assuming the council makes a selection, we may have to do a swearing in and then seat them at the next council meeting, unless, Gary, you think we could take a brief recess, have the clerk swear them in via Zoom. I mean, this is a slightly new world for all of us in, in this type of an environment. As the mayor is alluding to, typically, you would make a selection, and then we would swear person in, and they would take their seat at the next regular council meeting. So I don't know, Gary, if you have any thoughts on, on being able to, you know, interview, make a selection on the first, and then have that person join the balance of the meeting or not?
And before, Gary, before you answer that, also, if you could add to your answer, could a swearing in happen at a special meeting?
Yes, to that immediate question. And yes, the swearing in could occur at the same meeting that you deliberate over the appointment, provided the agenda allowed for that swearing in. It could be done over Zoom. And then a follow-up sworn oath as well, which I think is typical, and also would be in writing done afterwards. But it could all be done in the same meeting, provided the agenda provided for that.
And a question about how we would handle, if there was any kind of, and we would probably try to avoid this, but if we couldn't, closed session item or even agenda information, would the assumption be that all candidates that would be interviewed and potentially appointed would be given a complete packet so that they could be potentially ready to go at that same meeting? And what happens if there's a closed session item?
If there are closed session item, that can't be shared in advance, and that person wouldn't be able to participate until they're sworn in. But for the open session item, that information would be available with the agenda packet when it's posted beforehand, and that could certainly be shared with candidates.
Okay. Any additional questions about the appointment process? Checking in, Eddie, did we have any public comment on this item?
Any public comment, Mayor?
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion by council? I think historically, we have, like I said, always gone with the appointment process. It's also the fastest way to fill a vacancy. So we don't go the balance of the year with four members. We have clearly seen what happens when you have four members. Sometimes you can't take action, and that would be frustrating. Certainly, I, I support holding an appointment process as Steve has outlined. I think the timing is reasonable and allows us to have a full council and decide other issues as a full council in a timely manner. Councilmember Knight?
So Mayor, I, I think that I agree. I believe that best course of action is, is to fill the vacant seat by appointment. Interview candid- candidates deliberate and try to come do a consensus or one of the majority, if that's the process as we, as we, you know, who should serve out Vice Mayor Dorman's remaining term. But, you know, I, I'm also open, if that doesn't occur, that we should, that, that we would then move forward to call a special election to fill the council seat at our March first meeting for, for November. I, I'm not for any kind of option to consider a special election at the June primary that would cost the town a lot more money and, and candidates having to then also run basically two campaigns this year. So I, I support the going forward with the appointment process.
I'm happy to make a motion to that. I was waiting to hear from other council members, but don't see any hands raised. Councilmember Knight's the only one that regularly puts his hand up. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Thank you. I too am comfortable with the appointment. I did want to bring up a point for our people who are watching, and that is that the, the interviews for potential council members for appointment take place during our regularly scheduled meetings, so that it is all public, you know, the, the whole process. So I just wanted to bring that point up. Isn't that correct, Gary?
That is correct. The interviews must occur in open session.
And I think historically, we've all had other candidates to not be, well, this has all been done in the council chambers up till now. But in the past, we've had other candidates not be part of the interviews of their, their competitors. I don't know if that's just a courtesy, or I don't know that we can require that. Correct, Gary?
I think it certainly is part of the Zoom process because of the uniqueness of this. You could have someone in a waiting room and not be participating in that sense, and they would still have access to the meeting as required by AB three-six-one. So I think that's less of a, a question because of we've done in this format.
Councilmember Doran Becker, go ahead.
But just that to make, make sure that, that's the process, that it will all be, you know, broadcast since we're Zoom.
And I would also add to that point, all of the material that a potential applicant submits, a, a resume, a statement of qualifications, et cetera, would also be included in the document.
That's all public record. What about, I know this has been an issue in the past with even board and commission appointments about the amount of personal data that is potentially public information. Gary, could you speak to that if it's either prior to or after an appointment?
So if there's information submitted as part of the application that touches on privacy, there could be exceptions in the Public Records Act from disclosure. So you'd have to look at what's in there, things like personal cell phones, other information that, that might be private, and there's a balancing test in the Public Records Act for, for when you disclose and when you withhold when it's based on privacy concerns. So it's not automatically disposable. There's some information that could be withheld, but certainly most of the information would be disposable under a Public Records Act request.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moller?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I too support the appointment process. We've done it successfully for, you know, as we all can remember, at least a couple of decades. I think it makes a lot of sense. Spending that much money on a special election, I could just start pretty big list of things that I'd rather give back to my community than spending it on a special election. So I'm in full support of the appointment process.
Thank you. And, and also, just a couple of last reminders. This is only for the unexpired term, so this would only run until the election in November. And there's no guarantee of someone that is appointed, that they would either want to run for a full term or would have an advantage automatically over anyone that does not get appointed. Councilmember Knight?
Sure, thank you. Town Attorney Bell, just, his comments earlier provoked a question. How is, with Zooming and an interview of council members, how is the public able to comment or participate? I mean, is there, is there a requirement that after we interview that we receive public comment? How would, how would we do that in this circumstances with, with Zooming? Or webinar?
Yeah, so same rules would apply to your other, as your other meeting. And so the town council will be required to take public comment on the interview process, either before or during consideration of that item. And typically, you call for public comment and ask for it at the beginning of the item. And because this is an AB three-six-one meeting, they have to participate in the Zoom as they are now and could actually ask a live question should they choose to do so.
So we would basically, maybe in a process like this, interview candidates and then place the decision potentially either later in that meeting or the next meeting to allow public comment to occur?
Well, as long as you called for public comment before or during consideration of the item, so if, if you had an agenda item that said interviews of applicants or interviews and, and potential appointment of applicants and swearing in, you'd need to take public comment as part of that consideration, but you wouldn't need to delay it or, or take it to another meeting because you've allowed public comment for that item during or before your consideration of it. Now, when you actually choose to make the appointment, it's a council decision. You're bound by the sixty-day requirement in state law. So as long as that sixty-day window, the decision is made, that's what state law requires.
So what, what I'm hearing, Councilmember Knight, and maybe some clarification, Gary, would public comment be given after the interviews? Let's assume that this is going to take place on February one, just hypothetically. We agendize interviews of qualified applicants for the vacancy. We hold the interviews at two o'clock. The three o'clock regular meeting, or that is a special meeting that starts at two o'clock. Later in the agenda is action on the interviews and potential appointment. Would public comment be held only after the interviews, before the interviews, or before or after the interviews, and again on the other agenda for actual appointment?
So if you had appointment as a separate agenda item, there would be a new opportunity for public comment before taking action on that agenda item. If it was combined as all one single agenda item, you could make the decision if you wanted to allow the public comment before those interviews take place or at the end before you take action, because as long as you accept the public comment before you take action, it's during your consideration of the item. So when to call for that and how to incorporate the public into that, there's a lot of flexibility there, depending on how you want to arrange the agenda and also how you call for it as you consider the agenda item.
So we would expect that, again, hypothetical, on February first, a regular meeting starts at three o'clock. A, an early, probably first action on the agenda would be, well, not necessarily first, but potentially interviews of all qualified applicants. Public comment would come before the interviews, or would they be treated like a staff report, the interviews?
It could come before the interviews if the council would like to.
Okay. So then potentially, public comment, hold the interviews, and either deliberate immediately during that same agenda item and vote. If there's unanimous vote, because again, we have four people voting, or at least a majority vote, then that person could, in theory, be sworn in and seated by Zoom for the remainder of that February first meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions about this? Councilmember Doran Becker?
Well, now that we've gotten to that point, at that same meeting, would we then take the additional step of appointing a vice mayor? So that's in the same meeting. It's going to be quite a packed meeting.
Well, I think we're going to need to get a sense of how many interviews we might have. And also, if there's going to be a timeliness to appointing Vice Mayor, there may or may not be a meeting later in February. There may or may not be other obligations that require representation on other county boards and agencies. So I think we're going to need to evaluate. Quickly, the Vice Mayor position needs to be filled. There's no obligation to fill it at that first meeting.
Mayor, council, that's correct. And I would also add, at this point, we are delaying the normal annual review by the council of various council members appointments to boards and commissions and regional until you have that fifth council person. So shortly thereafter, whether it's the same meeting, and I would probably suggest it not be, but it'd be the following meeting, there would be the opportunity to have the five council members participate in that dialogue. That would give us the opportunity to have a briefing with whomever you have appointed so that they're familiar, have an opportunity to ask questions and sort of understand some of those things. But again, I just do want to remind you that we have deferred the normal annual review of who serves on what boards, bodies, commissions, et cetera, and will continue to do so until your result of the fifth council member.
Let's not forget my hour-long state of the town address that is typically the first meeting in February. So we might have a very long meeting. I'll have to shorten that up. Okay, any other questions or comments before we take action? It sounds like we have consensus, but we still need to formalize action. So somebody like to make a motion?
We need a minute order.
A minute order action?
Yes, please.
Hold on. Hold on, just a sec. I'm just going to warn Eddie that I'm getting an unstable internet connection warning again. So if I disappear, I'll be right back, and we'll continue after I'm back. But Councilmember Moller, go ahead.
I'll make a minute order that we approve the process of appointing the empty council seat. And do I need to make it more specific to a date certain?
Gary? Gary?
I I don't think it's necessary to include a date, and staff is going to put it back at that particular meeting.
Okay, then full stop with my current motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Mueller, second. Councilmember Doran Becker. Eddie, a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember John Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you. And Steve, for the audience, let, can we just, now that we have formally taken this action, can you restate the timing and the next steps for this? We don't necessarily know this will happen on February one, but what does the application period look like and how should people apply?
The deadline date will be four P M. January twenty eighth to send a a letter, resume, qualifications, or whatever the applicant wants to submit, and they can send it to Eddie Gomez, And at this point in time, we will do a screening of those folks on the thirty first to determine that they are qualified candidate. And as we've outlined in the potential notice, we will anticipate scheduling the interviews for February one to allow the council the opportunity to interview and potentially appoint and swear the applicant in. So they need to be prepared to be available to participate via Zoom for the interview during the February first council meeting.
And a couple more points of clarification. One, is there any minimum information that we may have a form that can be available on our website that somebody can download to provide information? And what are the specific qualifications in terms of, certainly residency in Yountville? Do they need to be a registered voter, things like that?
My understanding is they need to be eighteen and a resident of Yountville, and and that's it.
So not even a registered voter, just a resident?
Yeah, they do need to be an elector as that term is used in the elections code, so that is a voter.
Okay, so registered and a a primary resident, or how do we determine residency, Gary?
So there's a long answer to that, but the permanent, it needs to be your primary residence, and there's a test for that. The play, if you're registered to vote there, it has to be your primary residence, because that's where you're registered to vote. And it needs to be your domicile under the elections code.
Okay.
So basically, if you're registered in Yountville, you will be eligible to vote or to submit eighteen registered to vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Mayor. Just maybe a quick question for the town, town manager. In your staff report, you mentioned the, you list a pre-candidate orientation, and I just, is that a typical process, or do you expect to do that for those that may have read the report?
We have typically done that in all of our prior elections. I can't speak to all of the appointments. But staff definitely has provided a candidate orientation for all full council elections. And I mean, we're certainly, I I think we would be happy to do one, you know, later in the month of January prior to the deadline so that people could ask questions. And certainly, I am available and would make myself available to talk to anybody that is potentially interested so that they get a better understanding of of what they are potentially getting themselves into. I do think on that topic, Councilmember Knight, potentially, they do need to realize that they are going to have to be subject to Form seven hundred, all of the ethics and financial reporting requirements, et cetera, that are of a normal process for a council member. They just will fill all those out as after they're appointed, whereas normally, when you run a campaign, you start filing some of those documents ahead of time. Are with them, but the person will be subject to all of those constraints as well.
Councilmember Mueller? You're muted.
To make sure the public is clear, so get that form, have the option of, as we discussed, putting together a letter and a resume and just sending it to Eddie.
A letter and a resume really is, there is no application form for being a mayor. I want to say that we have a, that is not, that does, such an animal does not exist. So a letter of interest, a resume, statement of qualifications, you know, and all of that will be included in the public council packet.
So I would suggest that, do we have any forms for boards and commissions on our website for people that apply?
We do.
So I would suggest that people will take a look at that. Those help provide the basic information. And also, I think one of the points it's made is that sitting council members should not be used as references by someone that's applying. We have put that in our protocols.
So Eddie and I will go to work on having information ready to go, and we have a draft ad that will be ready to go to the Yountville sun.
And I'll ask Eddie, if we can add a button on our homepage that shows the board and commission sample application information, so people have a sense of what information they should be submitting at the very least. They're certainly welcome to write a narrative, but the way that we can verify their qualifications, there's some just basic information people need to provide. Like, a P O. box would not be sufficient, for example.
No, we're going to need, I will work with Eddie. Based on the council's feedback, Eddie and I will work on putting an application document together and go from there.
That that would be helpful, I think, to make it very clear and consistent, so people are providing at least similar basic qualification information to the council, and then if they add an additional narrative, that's their impression.
We will, we will do that.
Okay, any last questions before we move on? I think we've given staff enough homework in the next thirty-six hours.
Yes.
To make this happen. Thank you very much. So we look forward to receiving applicants from any qualified residents. I know we have staff informational reports on here. We have none. Also, council meeting reports, I don't believe we need to take time for that on the official meeting. So we have no questions. So that takes care of our business for today. We are going to adjourn to our next regular town council meeting, which is January eighteenth at three P M. And so I will go ahead and, I guess, since this will get us to five o'clock, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to three o'clock on Tuesday, January eighteenth.
Tom O.
One, just one point of clarification on there. Is the, is the January eighteenth meeting occurring? I was under the impression that it was waiting until?
It is a regular meeting that's going to occur because Steve said we have some timely business. It should not be a very long agenda at all, but I've said that about a thousand times.
All right, didn't mean to hold out the adjournment.
I was going to adjourn.
Okay, Councilmember Mueller, Councilmember Doran Becker, second. Roll call vote.
Yes, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember John Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we look forward to receiving those applications.
All right, bye.
Need to adjourn.
Bye.